Good evening and welcome to the Fall School Board. Monday, January 10, 2022. The school board meeting to up this day. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which is the excellent one in which it stands. In this world where we see each other. This meeting is taking place at Village Hall, the boardroom, W. 156 and E. 480, Monomie Falls, by three, air five one. A live broadcast will not be taking place tonight. There is something wrong with the service. Correct, incorrect? Yeah. So it's not recording. But Amy, however, will be recording it on her phone and will drop it onto the board website for future viewing. There is something wrong with the village Wi-Fi. So there's no Wi-Fi from the village to the room at the time either, which means we don't have access to board ops, which we use and put up on the screen. Kim was kind enough to make paper copies so we weren't disabled to work over that. Way to be used to work using those. Please bear with us. Again, it's the village equipment that's not working. We can apologize for that. We had that situation yesterday. Our board office out. Or it wasn't the Wi-Fi server. So the meeting's been called to orders. This meeting properly pressed again.
Yes, it was.
Thank you. We'll start the evening with reports from our student board members. Aida Sarina and Shadil Shaw.
All right, so I'll report sports like usual. So for boys basketball, we are now eight and two. We had two huge overtime wins last week. One against one at Arrowhead and one against at Coquillees. And we had a comfortable win against Alberto Southwest in our redout game. And then come out and support the boys as they have a home game this Tuesday against Rocket and this Friday against Alberto Sees. For girls basketball, we are now seven and five. They had a huge ninety-one to nineteen blowout win against Milwaukee West recently. And then come on to their next home game, which is Thursday, January twentieth, against Detroit. Then wrestling is now three and six on the season. They got nineteenth out of sixty-three teams on the water tournament in Ashemash. They also got twelve out of seventeen teams in the duck tournament. And then come out this Thursday to see them wrestle with Coquillees.
All right, and then finals are next week, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. So students are studying hard to prepare for the next test. Last week, Friday, at the boys' basketball game, National Honor Society raised money for the American Court Association and to honor Kaden Deal. The basketball game theme was brought out in support of the cause. And at halftime, NHS collected money for the cause. We do not know how much that was, but it was very successful. The Spring Musical will have a production of Into the Blitz. The audition dates are set for the beginning of February, but the time, the date to the performance are still being set. Band review is back after a two-year, like two-year break. The members of the Monomie Falls Band are putting on their own production of The Odyssey of the Falls, a story of Greek gods. This will be a virtual performance that will be produced at the end of April. The members of the cast are hoping to be able to do a live performance at the amphitheater at the Falls Fest Park sometime in May, when the weather gets nicer. And then members of Fosa are competing in online test competitions this week and are presenting their projects they have been working on really very hard with. And they're hoping to make it to the next level competition. And then there was definitely a buzz at the high school last week when Mr. Gala, Ms. Pahovjak, and Ms. Thomas served as substitutes from their short staff. So thanks for them for helping out.
Thank you. So any questions for Daniel or Ava? It'd been interesting to be in those classes.
I bet.
Board notes, is there anything you would like to share? Just to start with.
It feels like each is a goal. I enjoyed attending the Monomie Falls Pick Your Country Band concert. It's really incredible to see some new performers and all of they can learn in a few months and put together concerts. So felt a lot of fun. Then I also attended the North Spelling Meet and the, all of the attendees will be, will be on to the district live spelling meet this next Tuesday. Fun, there's a lot of very talented spellers. I see some familiar faces when I attend the spelling meet for a few years. Really exciting to watch. So I think it's Tuesday at North, I wonder if I'm saying? Yes, at North Attletory. Then I also attended the Candlelight Vigil for Peace and Unity. This was the second time this was held in the gazebo in Milhong, Alaska. And it just was really well done. I know this is a knowledge fair, Jay Blackwell's school, Suge Duff's school. And then the losing girls and try to ask to keep our candles lit. It was a cool evening, but just a really nice gathering. And then I've done coaching lots of fourth grade boys basketball. That can be memorable.
Eric. Nothing to report? Kathy, thank you for going to the ritual. I know it's extremely cold. I had the opportunity to attend at the high school celebration, please give me the name of that celebration where they celebrate students once a month for the breakfast.
Champions breakfast.
The Champions Breakfast, which acknowledges students that have done something for their fellow student or that has meant some type of character, I believe, this was do the right thing this last time. And I also want to thank that it's a beautiful ceremony. It's upstairs in, I don't know what you call that room?
Two thirty-one.
Two thirty-one. It's a big, beautiful room that these students are too, working groups or in study halls. But it's really a community effort. There's a lot of donation, Panera, Starbucks, and a lot of the other community members donating breakfast foods to the students. And literally, you know, my heart had a line of coffee pots. So I was really grateful. But congratulations to those students. It's a great celebration. I'm going to conclude quietly. Michelle. Eric.
I have nothing to report.
What? I don't really have anything to report. I just want to say thank you. I know we've had some staffing issues since we come back from winter break. So just a great big thank you to our administrators who are filling in and all the district staff members across the whole district who are filling in. Maybe in the least, but not necessarily their home. So I, as a parent, greatly appreciate that.
Thank you. Lynn, can you share your report?
I will. And I hope it was a good buzz about that high school. But it was fun. I filled it on Friday and then today I belong to Suzy Thomas and Jeff Nettie helped out at Ben Franklin. So I had opened up the spectrum. And it's amazing the similarities between second graders. But I really, and I just want to echo what Linda said about the appreciation for the administrators, all of that possibility, all of what we need to keep our schools open and kids in session. We do closely monitor our dashboard and track cases at our schools, classroom and community. With the rapid increase in cases of new Omicron variant throughout the country, we could potentially experience an impact on staff. And that's not potentially be our experience and impact on staff in our schools. Specifically, the high school last week was very much struggling. I know we're in a better place today, which we're thankful for. We still have some out. Right now, Ben Franklin, this is the school that is, we just have a significant number of staff out. So we're all pulling together across the district to keep our students in school there to the best of our ability. As with most industries, we are experiencing those higher staff absences. And communicated, really, we must be prepared to shift to a virtual learning model if necessary, either at the school level or district wide. In the interest of our staff, students, and families, we'll make every effort to afford that decision. And I hope you're seeing that we're trying our best to do that. So if that decision would be driven purely by staff, and we have to have adults in our buildings where a people-rich workplace, so we need, obviously, you can't run a second grade classroom without adults in that seat. So we're just doing all we can to get the right pieces in the right places to make sure we can have a safe, productive school throughout the day. If we had to go virtual, we will do our best to communicate that as early as possible. It would be very targeted to where it's needed as well as how long it's needed. So that's the approach that we're taking now. Based on conversations with Washington County Health Services and the endorsement from the Wisconsin Department of Health Services, we did communicate last week with families that we have begun to implement the new CDC guidelines related to COVID-19 isolations and quarantine. This allows us to shorten those periods that staff or students are out. If their symptoms have subsided after five days, they're able to come back if they're willing to mask. And if they're not, then they choose to stay that whole five, ten days out. We hope this will support our students and staff by allowing those all enough to return to school within those updated guidelines. Just asking everyone to do all they can to keep our schools open for in-person learning. Most importantly, stay at home if you're not feeling well. Report those positive cases on our student COVID-19 page if your staff member is listening. We like to report those. Just helps us understand what we're up against and to be able to watch other areas. Please consider wearing a mask at school in our classrooms while not required. We strongly recommend mask wear for students and staff because they're distinct and people in intense environments, twenty-five, the case of our youngest learners. We've got twenty to twenty-five students in those rooms in the high school, sometimes more. So just small spaces and a lot of people. So anything we can do to help keep one another healthy is going to help us stay open and keep everyone in a good spot. Our proud announcement, Monomie Falls High School was recognized once again by the Milwaukee Business Journal and its annual book of lists as the fifteenth top-ranked high school among Milwaukee-area public high schools. According to the Milwaukee Business Journal, the list is ranked by data score information of students who participated in at least one AP exam, passed at least one AP exam, math proficiency, reading proficiency, graduation rate, includes data from school websites and other sources, including U.S. News Best High Schools. The Wisconsin Department of Public Construction did not report, I'm sorry, I'll add that. That's not accurate. That's reported in nineteen twenty. So congratulations to the high school. And we always say congratulations to the entire district. Most of our students begin with us and stay with us for the entire duration of their schooling. So really, any of those accolades are a reflection of our K-12 programming. The four-K, five-K enrollment portal for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year is open. So yes, we're now starting to think about that next school year. Visit fallschools.org and click on four-K enrollment to begin enrollment, which includes signing up for one of our four-K, five-K nights, which will be held this year on January twenty-sixth and February second from five p.m. to seven-thirty p.m. at Shady Lake Elementary School in the gymnasium. Please remember, students must live within school district boundaries to attend. You'll have to be proof of residency to enroll. Your child must be four-years-old or under before September first of 2022 for four-K and five-years-old. About a little more September first for five-K. Proof of age will be required. Child's identification record will be needed as they always have to. After forty years of education, school district of Monomie Falls Director of Technology, Jeff Nettie, recently announced he will retire at the end of this school year. Mr. Nettie has served as Director of Technology for SDMF since 2011, should adjust form. He's in the very back room here helping fill in today to run this program. And he's spent his day today filling in at Ben Franklin Elementary to help assure that our library programming would continue. Jeff has stayed on the cutting edge of his respective areas of expertise throughout his career. He's been critical to the development, to our improvement work. He is one of the most brilliant professionals I've worked with, and his work rate is second to none. He needs big shoes to fill in our district. We begin the process to search for Mr. Nettie's replacement within the next few weeks. He will continue to serve as the Director of Technology through the end of this school year to ensure a smooth transition. And another sad but exciting announcement for a team member after thirty-two years of education, Monomie Falls High School Principal Bob Vitale also in the room in the back of the room announced that he would retire at the end of 21, 22 as well. He has served for twenty-four years of his career at Monomie Falls High School. The school district of Monomie Falls is grateful for his leadership, his dedication to service, his connection with students and staff, and his commitment to learning. He's been a model of servant leadership in our district, is selfless and personally committed to helping each student and everyone who knows him. Each student really needs, each individual student, he knows his kids by name. He meets with every senior during the course of their senior year to make sure he's talking with them about their plan and thanking them for their time here. Be sure that they find success. He is remarkable and will be missed. He leaves a legacy of high performing high school, and that serves all students. And we will also be hosting and looking to fill that position this spring. He will be with us for the entire school year. So excited for both of those individuals. Sad, you're all great friends of mine personally and incredible friends to the school district of Monomie Falls. So congratulations to them.
Any questions for Mr. Phil?
Yeah, I just received a question from a student member. They were curious if a student is not feeling well but does not have COVID, if they can elect to have virtual instruction if they feel well enough to, you know, to come to school.
If a student, yeah, I'm sorry. If a student asks. Sorry, thanks. If a student's not has COVID symptoms, that's when they're off. At a period of time, we do support them in that virtual environment. They would be quality of, I said, they should be calling in on that hotline, how, what did their school or their teacher to determine how that would be called.
I think your question was, it's like, just there's other, like, upper respiratory stuff going on. Like, like, moving along, cough, and, you know, they don't want to send their kids to school with cough. You know, like, maybe it's, I don't know. Three days, I don't know. But, but yeah, I mean, just.
Yeah, we're not asking teachers to move to virtual for a single or one or two days. Not only at an extended period of time, but we can support most of that.
Okay, so they should just talk with their principal or attendants if they want to.
Yeah.
Any other question? Any other question? Before we get further into the working out with Aida Sarina, who's helping herself at the boardroom, I'll start over to my left. Aida Sarina is one of our student board reps from the high school. Shadil Shaw is in year two of the draft selection. Tenefan, that's four member, Kathy Oley, four member, Bruce, board member. I'm Dave Van Horst, President of the School Board. This is our superintendent, Cory Dalla. Cheryl Dybel is board member, or a counselor board member, and Melinda Bishane, board member. Thank you. And in the front, helping us out, is our administrative assistant, Ken Spitt. And of course, our finance director, Dee Brighton. We're thankful for being here. We will now move on to our finest. And we thank you all and all the parents that are here. This is exciting. These are what we, what we're here for is to educate students. So Bob, would you like to come up and introduce the, I believe it was Mr. Taylor as well? Or you guys in? And I apologize, it's Miss Schuster. It's not Mr. Taylor. These are our AP scholars.
Yep, so if I could have all the AP scholars that I met with in the lobby, if you wanted to line up against the wall here, please?
While they're doing. While they're doing, yeah, approximately one or two this year with that prep up. AP scholars.
My leader of the AP program will fill in all of this.
Very good, thank you.
Before we get to the AP part, I need to echo also, like Melinda said, thank you to Cory and Casey and Suzie for helping us out at the high school. And I cannot thank the staff at the high school. They are picking up extra classes and going full straight through the school day without breaks. So I cannot thank them enough for what they've done for our school and our kids. So next is, I want to introduce Stacy Schuster. She is our AP coordinator and has done a phenomenal job with our AP program. And she will explain to you why we have all these wonderful students over here.
Thank you, Mr. Miss Alley. Hello again. So, so pleased to be here tonight to show you. We had three hundred and ninety-four students take seven hundred and thirty-six exams this past May for the two-week testing period. We had twenty-six subject areas that we tested in with one hundred and forty-three AP scholars. So exams are scored one to five. And if you receive a three or higher, usually that warrants the granting of college credit on that exam at your post-secondary institution. We had sixty-four AP scholars, and that would be a three-year hire on three AP exams. And we had twenty-three AP scholars with honors. Now, we had three point two-five average on your AP exams taken. And then we had fifty-six AP scholars with distinction with a three-point-five average on all AP exams. So I congratulate all our students, our AP teachers. And that just shows that everyone is working very, very hard in supporting the program. So we're very happy to bring in us tonight, some of our scholars that are here. I think we're going to have them come up to the microphone for our judges in the hall. Introduce yourself if you're a senior. Let us know what you are hoping to do next year. This house is made by the way, but we're here. And if there's any experience that you want to share on the test or what your favorite one was, feel free to come and have fun.
Hello, I'm Ethan Bennet. I'm a senior at Monomie Falls High School. And first, I'd like to start off with thanking the school board and all of the board for allowing me the opportunity to take our Navy courses. I would like to also thank my family who motivated me to take these classes and succeed. I'm a senior and I'm planning on moving to college at MSU or UW Madison and then pursue a career in electrical engineering. And that's what I'm planning on doing at high school.
Thank you and congratulations. Thank you to the parents, all parents in the room. We know that this is a lot of work and a lot of support. But thank you.
Hello, my name is Alex Alau. I am also a senior at Monomie Falls High School. Next year, I plan on going to college for computer science. And because of the AP classes I've taken, I realized that I enjoy computer science. So I'm very appreciative that I was able to take those AP classes that I did.
Thank you for coming.
Hello, I'm Nicholas Young at Monomie Falls. And I'm a senior. So next year, I'm planning on going to either UW or Madison and doing computer science. And yeah, AP econ is hard.
Congratulations and thank you for sharing.
Hello, I'm Madison Kyle. I graduated last year for class twenty twenty-one and am currently a freshman at the University of Wisconsin, Stevens Point, pursuing a degree in biochemistry with a pretty met emphasis. Took lots of AP exams and they were totally terrific. They inspired me to go on to college and pursue a very difficult education. And just wanted to say thank you for it and the school district.
And you, thank you. Come back anytime and share your experience.
Hi, my name is Jack Mackey. And I am currently a college freshman studying computer engineering at the Milwaukee School of Engineering. As for my education at the Falls, I have no complaints really. There's a lot of great teachers.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name's Kira Lieber. I'm a senior at Monomie Falls right now. And next year, I'm looking at a couple of different colleges right now. I'm not sure yet. But Madison's definitely an option. And I'm not sure where I live either. So I'm kind of like, I'm leaving at business school and possibly law school afterwards. But it's still near my plans.
Congratulations.
Hi, everyone. I'm Mr. Ahmed. I'm seeing at Monomie Falls. I think my favorite AP class this year has been AP Psychology. It's really interested me, and I'm thinking about double majoring in psychology. But right now, I'm kind of on the business track and hopefully graduate later on. And thank you for the recognition.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Mary Elwood. And I'm a senior at the high school. I first have to thank all of my talented teachers who helped me achieve all that I had in my AP classes. This year, I'm taking AP Environmental Science. And that has really piqued my interest for environmental engineering, which is what I'm going to pursue in college. But yeah.
Thank you very much.
Hello, everybody. I'm Liam Coe. Next year, I'll be attending Vanderbilt University. I'm not really sure my major is, but I'm going to do a minor in business and maybe major in economics or something. And my favorite AP class is probably COVID.
Students, if you come up, there is a little basket. Yep, quite a big one. You usually hand it to, but because of COVID, we didn't have to stress that.
All right, well, hi, I'm Ian John. I'm a senior at the high school. Next year, I also plan to go to Bearville. And I think I'll major in econ. So if you'd like to, you know, with econ, you know.
My contacts is a night.
Actually, yeah.
Congratulations.
Hello, my name is Brent Pauling. I'm a senior at Monomie Falls High School. Over the course of my years, I've taken many AP classes. A few of them that I know are AP Psychology, Environmental Science, Spanish, and I'm blanking on one. But recently, I was accepted in the University of Notre Dame. And I'm not yet committed to this college. I'm waiting to see the results. But I am undecided as well, so I'm not going to see that.
Congratulations.
I'm Shadil Shaw, a senior at Monomie Falls High School. I know, sorry, I killed it last time too. But I'm gonna either, or major in political science. And I was thinking about economics, but like Nick said, it is really hard. I'm a pre-law track and either open to attend the University of Loyola Chicago next year and the University of Wisconsin-Nexis.
Good work.
Thank you.
Are there any parents in the room that came for their student? I never get that comment right to me. If not, you also be very proud. Exciting time for us and for you. Thank you for coming back, especially those that are already in school. Thank you, Bob, thank you, Stacy. And we really do want to thank the staff. This is a lot of work, and they have to go to training to teach these students. College of all work for them.
It's a lot of work for them, but congratulations on your success. And you're more than welcome to stay for the full meeting, but if you get out of things to do, can ask to come up and go. I thought you'd been ready to step out. Now's the opportunity for the, I'd like to make a statement. So Kim, are you able to run through the on? Yeah, you can use your cell phone. Maybe we'll start with William Godmaller of the Perry Closepe.
Is there?
Thank you for that. Go ahead, thank you.
I, William Godmaller, a student at our high school, have pleaded with you several many times. I have emailed you, spoken to you, and even applied to be a member of your institution. I have tried to form student organizations, nurse compromises between the laboring parties, and promote the preemptive education over politics. I have distanced myself from the disrespect that plays to our school board meetings, appealed empathy, and encouraged respectful disagreement. Yet, with respect to COVID this year, you have been emphatic, persistent in pursuing politics over education, stubborn in prioritizing the opinions of the few, of the education of the many, unyielding in acting against the needs of the teachers and the student body. We, the community, are also to blame. We have intimidated our board members with large crowds, divisive rhetoric, and vociferous partisan applause. We have innovated the district with politics and disrespect, and we have relinquished empathy and conscience for antipathy, immorality. We now face an unprecedented surge with more active cases than ever, hundreds of students away from learning, and dozens of teachers sick. Yet, the absent political approach lives on, continuing to do nothing while my in-person education is put at risk. An infection from school has already kept me away from education. Thousands of infections and quarantines have already lost our students collectively, decades of in-person learning, and we are already on the verge of virtual learning. I do not deserve this. Our teachers do not deserve this. Our healthcare workers do not deserve this. We, the students, do not deserve this. Thus, to avoid the unforgivable losses that will result from our absence, I advocate that the board require masks throughout the districts, district, sorry, until cases fall, implement strict congregation protocols in the hallways and cafeterias, and mandate masks at all sporting events. We must treat virtual learning as a last option, not a first option. Otherwise, if we choose to continue in our absent road to disaster, I may be back in two months, speaking again. However, my tone will be far more somber than today, by education infinitely more damaged than it is now. There, in hindsight, our board and our community will wallow in despair. There will be no argument, no politics, only regret. Our extraordinarily honorable board, seriously, I'm dead serious, which has proven its merit before, will thus anguish in the trenches of universal criticism and risk education. The board and community must now make their decision. What is more important, the students or politics? In other words, my education or politics? I'd appreciate no partisan applause, or community divided can understand. Thank you very much.
Thank you, William, for your time. Nina Kristensen?
So I want to thank the school board for consideration for revising the Board Policy three sixty-one to address the library books that may contingent on the Wisconsin statute nine four eight one one and nine four eight one one two regarding relating to pornography and harmful materials to children. Although there may have been differences in opinion on certain topics relating to our children's education under the Department of State that was made, I understand that the senior aspect of the policy will be addressed next. I've been in communication with the Director of Curriculum Act of consideration to allow parents direct access to a list of books added and removed from circulation. Currently, only fifteen books at a time are listed in Destiny to show new books, and only a report from the administration can generate the list of books removed. To me, that still poses a challenge for parents to have easy access to this information. Could there be a way to put out a monthly list in the directories website so parents can have a quick overview? I want to ensure that our school district is in compliance with Wisconsin Legislative Rule PI eight, which requires library facilities to have both balanced collection of books, which depicts in accurate and unbiased way. This transparency will be helpful for parents to have a better oversight of books in cross to possibly assist a library review specialist. My next point is more of a personal statement. I want to clarify an assertion that was made in a previous meeting about the intentions behind my library book presentation. Never once have I demanded censorship, banning of books, teachers' lesson plans, or assignments. I've always held steadfast in my position about parental choice and autonomy. In my original speech, I stated, quote, "I would not demand to have these books banned, but at the very least parental consent and notification is ignored," end quote. I have held true to these statements. I'm cognizant of the real world that we, I'm cognizant of the real world, and that we live in a diverse community with families that hold different value systems. My stance was about respecting each parent's decision on how they raise their children and therefore decide on what they want their children to be exposed to. It was not about erjecting my own values upon others. My message has always been clear and concise. It was about implementing a rating or notification system for the books for transparency purposes and to possibly reassess the vetting process utilized. In addition, there is actually a legal obligation to address these books. Our current Wisconsin statutes are in place to establish a minimum standard to protect all children, regardless if they attend public or private schools. So in closing, I would welcome any parent that may have opposing viewpoints to reach out to have a full dialogue. This would be much more productive if we were to collaborate for the greater good of our children. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You recently published new guidelines for restrictions related to children with illnesses. The published graphic blatantly separates vaccinated from unvaccinated. Do you not see a problem with this discrimination? Has the school ever imposed a distinction between vaccinated and unvaccinated children in history, or any disease? The discrimination of students based on medical status is reverent. You cannot ask students their vaccination status, so how would you measure the response to these guidelines? You should not hopefully imposing restrictions in a segregated manner. Do you segregate children with common cold or flu when these elements are just as contagious and just as legal based on metrics from the CDC, which is the same organization you rely on to draft your guidelines? You need to begin making more responsible and educated decisions regarding how you treat children, regardless of what you see on the news. Do your own research within the district. You're supposed to be educated leaders. Please use some of your education to gather proof back from the district's student metrics and stop basing your guidelines on county statistics only. Keep in mind that the tests used to determine specific known as cited in your guidelines has already been noted as infected by the CDC and FDA as of December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one. So the results of these tests cannot be trusted anywhere. Do not go backwards in your management of health in our district. Keep masks optional, do not discriminate based on medical status. Leave the health decisions to the parents, that they are ultimately responsible for the health and well-being of their children. I believe we all wish to move forward toward normalization, not unjustified fear. Keep your focus on education. Thank you.
Thank you.
You seem to have seen people come. Can you be a little bit nicer to them? Hi, I'm Margie Fopf. I'm from the Monomie Falls. I'm a grandparent. Anyhow, I'm coming to actually say I'm happy that you guys have adopted the CDC's guidelines. I don't like the guidelines, but at least I think they're reasonable now. The five-day restriction is much better than the ten days or an arbitrary number. So I think that the guidelines, until we can even get them better, I do agree that the vaccination status, they're talking now about, how come everybody that's sick has got vaccinated? I don't quite understand it. But anyhow, the one thing is, is that if you haven't been vaccinated, they do want you to do the same thing as the other ones. So it makes it easy. It's five days, five days. You have the symptoms, you have the, even if it's a positive test, negative test, symptoms, five days. Wear a mask and come back to school, five days. It really isn't as bad as it was. So I think we're helping get our kids back in school and not have them out for such extended periods of time. But I'm happy that you're doing this, and that we're looking still forward as a world, and realize that it is something that we have to learn to deal with, and we can't isolate ourselves forever. We need to be a community and be together, and it means, I get sick. So I'm very glad that we're at least adopting the CDC guidelines and that the CDC has come forward. So that's all I want to say tonight.
Thanks, Margie.
I want to thank the Monomie Falls School District for maintaining masks optional and modifying quarantine guidelines throughout the school year, including most recently allowing all asymptomatic close-contact elementary children to stay in school. This new quarantine guideline was even announced around the holidays in the midst of the Omicron variant. A rational and realistic approach to keeping our kids in school is what we need moving ahead. I would also like to thank the schools and primarily the teachers, working tirelessly in school and making it work. Our children deserve, our teachers deserve extra praise for showing up every day and making the job look easy with their time and talents. In regards to masks, I work in the medical setting, and I can appreciate how difficult it is to communicate daily while wearing a mask. As a speech pathologist, I understand how important it is for children to hear and see sounds in articulation. Wearing a mask either makes it difficult for young children to gauge how well they make those sounds. If required to wear a mask, a child's ability to hear vocal intonation in a friend's or teacher's voice can be muffled. It can be difficult for a child to pick up on pragmatic language skills such as taking turns in conversation. It is even difficult for a child to pick up on social cues and read emotions. I remember my daughter coming home last school year when masks were required, saying, "My teacher always squints at me." And I had to explain to her, "No, she's smiling." That was the time, that was the time we were living in them, and this is now. These are important early developmental skills a child needs to learn, and masks can delay those skills. Learning sounds to speak and phonics to read is critical in reading development. Given that seventy-seven percent of the Monomie Falls children in K five through second grade are reading at on-grade level, we cannot sacrifice that progress in reading and still have a long way to go to improve our children's reading levels. Masks and the stress of these times are also having a significant impact on our children emotionally and psychologically. It is stressing our kids out. I recently read a news piece from TMJ four. They interviewed the chief medical officer at Children's Hospital, who said, quote, "We know that reading and math levels have decreased, and we know that anxiety, depression, and suicide rates are up." In fact, one Milwaukee clinic said that typically they have ten to twelve children on waiting lists to be seen for psychological problems. Now, they have a waiting list of sixty. These are just a few reasons to keep children in school and keep masks off our children. The long-term repercussions are more detrimental than the risks of our children getting COVID. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Now we will go into the meeting reports. Great pleasure of learning. We have a report. We can meet over the holidays. Our next meeting is this Thursday, January thirteenth, six P M, Village Hall, room thirty-three forty-four, thirty-three forty-four. Policy, Mr. Paulson?
No report on policy. We have not had since the last report. Our next meeting is scheduled for January twenty-seventh at five P M. This will also take place in the Village Hall Commons Room thirty-three forty-four.
Thank you.
My name is Central Services, Mrs. Gold. Right at the Midbury Services, got right back yet? On Monday, January third, I'll take you to the agreement and the committee members for pressing over the end-of-year rate. We called the meeting in order. It was properly posted, and we approved the minutes of the December sixth meeting. We reviewed the committee accountability calendar, and we described the use and attendance to the auditor room in attendance for the annual audit report. The committee then heard twenty-one, twenty-two one fiscal year year-end audit report summary from Wendy Unger, DPA. Ms. Unger is the lead auditor on the bigger twenty team that completes our annual manual audits. The audit reports issued as unmoditized or as a clean audit opinion. The final audit reports, as well as Ms. Unger's summary before that, are attached to the Agenda Item four drafts. The manual statements are also posted on this report. Next, we talked about ASR funding. Administration continues to seek clarity from DPI and the status of the ASR three discretionary funds. ASR three funds are the largest source of the ASR fund allocated to SDMA and critical to the twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-three, twenty-four budgets, as these funds were allocated in lieu of state revenues. This item will be a standing item for the committee until that actual funding amounts are known and approved at the state level. Next, we discussed school nutrition staffing and impact on Profield School Service contracts. All Profield schools that received meals from our district have been formally notified. The last meal service will end on February eleventh. Administration has been working with the schools to plan a transition to a private vendor, as well as with guidance from DPI. The meal service to Profield Schools has led some issues, but we continue at increasing staffing issues. Next, we reviewed the twenty-one, twenty-two budget calendar. The twenty-two, twenty-three budget calendar has been attached to the Agenda Item, and will be revisited at the next meeting. The calendar helps both the board and the community to see the progress through the budget cycle, as well as identify key opportunities for input. And I forget how many there are, like twenty-six or twenty-five? Okay, all right, that's cool. Next, we discussed facility budget planning. We reviewed preliminary facility capital budget recommendations for twenty-two, twenty-three school year. The annual operating budget supports six hundred seventy-five thousand dollars for major repairs and replacements of district facilities. The full list of recommended projects can be viewed as an attachment in Word doc. The Special Olympics organization has requested consideration of reduced fees for upcoming use of the gymnasium and pool. Any exceptions to the Board's provision for rental fee schedules are brought before the committee for review and approval. Based on the review, the request has been approved. The committee then satisfied the statutory requirement of Act one forty-three that the Board or Board Committee review, at least annually, use of lockdown or active shooter drills at new school. The scheduling and reporting of these and all drills by your superior authority, et cetera, are now all reported in the Ratcha platform, and these drills are part of the annual reporting committee. Our last item was the North Mill School start time and helping logistics. We continue the discussion of reviewing the North school start time and the impact on overall district funding. Due to the complexity of the potential solutions, the committee recommends bringing this item forward for full Board discussion at an upcoming meeting, so perhaps the September eighth of January. That will be assured of meeting, and we set our next meeting date for five P M on February seventh. That concludes your report.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for? Yeah, I think we have.
If I do have a quick question. Yes, sir, then any update regarding the ASR funds since the beginning of the school year? Or the, I'm sorry, the calendar year?
Not really. There's been some indication that this movement in Washington approved the way it was structured, how we got it credibly, but we're not, have to kind of confirm that yet, so we're tracking closely.
Have you had any conversations with our local legislators?
We have, like finance committee members, so we have the mayor's office, the senator, and all of those offices, teachers, education. So we're tracking with that approval.
Great, thank you. And then I just wanted to make to what parents or anyone that's listening that would need to have these drills that are required to work its notifications, as well as the parent's, something happened with this drill. And then I ask, okay, is there a more being of you with, and I can put it on the future board? Okay, thank you. First, no, Mr. Kelsall.
This has no report. We are scheduled for this Thursday at 5:00. And then curriculum will follow that, so.
Curriculum resource.
So if we have a tight meeting, then are we starting early curriculum? Or?
Follow right.
Follow right up to the next.
Okay, thank you. Communications, Mrs. Shane.
Communications has no report. Our next meeting is February 2nd at 4:30 in Room 3344.
Great, thank you very much. Mrs. Cruz.
Short report tonight, as gathered from a bit of a recess. And this looks like the State of the State address will be scheduled for February 17th, probably 7:00 p.m. Representative Newbauer was elected to my minority regard of the Assembly. And to me, the 30 will receive a hearing at 12, so that's Wednesday. That's the new bill. You may have saw the news I gave last week. That looks to come to a place for grades 5 through 12 on how to hear and talk. That'd be another question.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions tomorrow? Who's the SWSA meeting? So there will be some updates at that point as well. All right. Open enrollment seats, go into the discussion rooms, Mr. Gray.
Okay, so we don't have the screen available or the document available. We'll move that back to the next meeting.
Yeah, we got it.
Give me some.
So then we're taking a look at the first of all, projections for the next school year. The projection methodology is pretty straightforward. So we're rolling up kids at one grade level, and then predict the voting, maybe 4K and 5K levels. And then any point to students ninth grade, who also focus who's coming into the system. So starting again. Again, these are very early projections, and we're bringing them to the board now because the board required to approve or not open enrollment seats in October. And so we use these projections to determine whether there's space available to a lot of open enrollment students. Based on our methodology, we are projecting class sizes within our optimal range and above the range where we would accept open enrollment students. So given that we're not recommending to accept open enrollment students here this year. We did type things up quite a bit, especially the elementary level, the upper schools. So we have a lot for screen line class size and section size already. So it goes on all these before the open enrollment decisions. And as I mentioned, next meeting on January 24th, we're going to back for the word for that approval and getting open seats. And you will look at the chartless grid at that time.
I have a quick question for you. As I was looking at this, and I know you haven't taken it open enrollment for quite a while, but every once in, some of these grades, especially the lower grades, like second grade, the third grade, it says new. Are these students that may personally move out of the district and will allow them to stay?
Correct. It's tuition waivers mean they move out of the district, continue attending here, and then we're part of open enrollment next year. It's different in terms of approving new seats.
How long do they get to stay here? And is it definite or?
It's indefinite, yes.
And so that answers the question of one call.
Yeah, it could be the decision between levels to not allow them to return. This is what I'm trying to add.
You have to provide your own presentation.
It happens.
Yes.
And Michelle, I'm sure your mic wasn't on, so she didn't indicate they have to provide their own transportation.
That's correct.
And just as you, anyone looking forward here, next year will be the last year with objective. Two students next year. That also is contributed to some of the climbing in our population. Some education, which goes by Pi, the idea, if you've seen that anywhere, that's the new parent group at Viva, Viva Franklin and Riverside. It's the old PTA, the ones PTL, and now they are common self participants in education, is hosting the school board candidate forum on Thursday, January 27th, 2022, from 6:30 to 8:30 here in Village Hall, Home Room. The purpose of this event is to provide the listeners in Mountain Falls with the opportunity to learn about the candidates for running for the school board. Each candidate will be given the opportunity to introduce themselves, with an opening statement, answer a series of pre-selected questions from the board meeting, and finish with a closing statement. The oral will be forecasted, excuse me, broadcasted live on Time Warner Cable's set of stations. Okay. The school library material selection resources. This is with regards to the letter that I wrote that I presented at the last meeting. I did not hear from anyone except for, this is only with regards to suggested changes. And unfortunately, I didn't hear from her until after I already sent this to Kim. This is sort of his style. Changes, which is fine, that's your job. That's all I know. I truly appreciate that. So, Kim, would you like to go ahead and share? I think board members did, where did you get their copy? Did you make copies of this as well? Okay. Because of the situation with regards to the internet, I'm thinking maybe probably the best situation will be for Kim to share those changes, and then we can bring this back for a vote at the next meeting so that you all can see it clearly. Correct, if that's okay.
Sure. But then you want me to kind of speak to?
Yes, you want to speak to your changes, and then we can send out to the board a clean copy for review that people will be able to comment on. So I will at that point need a motion to approve this next board meeting. But Kim, I want you to go ahead and share your changes.
Sure, yeah, just some minor suggestions. In the beginning of the letter, referring to many other districts, that can be a lowercase district.
Okay.
Instead of accordance with, just change that to per, trying to be more concise.
I'm sorry, tell me what line that is.
In accordance with Wisconsin state statutes, just change that to per.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And then down to is not our intent, that should be intention.
Do you have a paragraph for me?
I don't know. I'm just looking at the email that I sent you. I don't have the full letter. But it's not our intention that they are, we're not supposed to, we only ask for adequate or complete advisories. And it refers to school purchases. I think school should be lowercase.
Okay, yep.
And then instead of is our intention to create a national conversation, just say we intend to create a national conversation. And that would just end, kindly respond to us that board is, there's a lot of similar sentence structures, so just trying to vary that a little bit. More stylistic.
No, and that's what you do for women, like I said. These changes are all just like, like you said, stylistic. I'm happy to just go on this tonight, and no one else had to think.
I mean, I'm fine with that. It's up to everyone else. It really is just styling here.
And there's a meeting, so I'm going to just go on this and move forward. I appreciate that. What I've done for the listening and watching audience, we actually were able to put the letter on the letterhead so we could see how it fit in here with the goal to try to get it all in one page and then have a separate signature page so that we could all sign. And then from there, because we also have all the copy, who we're copying on here, so that takes up a lot of space as well. And then I also, at the end, one of the changes that I made was to add, to attach our policy 361, so they can see the approach that we're taking. And then I also included the statutes, which I've been one of our speakers, quoted as well, state statutes in the letter. So those are all in there, and I appreciate that. So if we do vote to approve it tonight, I will ask for everyone to go ahead and sign it, and then the board, and then you vote. And Kim, if you're okay with that, we can have Kim adopt the changes in that. Okay, so if that's the case, and thank you again for those that are listening and watching. This is a letter that Mr. Gola and I scripted to send to the publishers to ask them to start considering, and what we actually like is for them to come up with a rating system very similar to what is used for video games, movies, TV, literally everything that's out there that kids can be exposed to, except for books. So we're asking that this rating system be implemented and printed on the books so that it helps our librarians, our media specialists, parents, community members, anyone that happens to be buying books. Okay. So is there then a motion to approve the letter pending, if we get stylistic adjustments?
Paul's second.
Okay, thank you. Was moved by Mrs. Grant, seconded by Mrs. Shane. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay. I will send my clean copy and the road. You will sign, and then send it back.
Could we ask for Mrs. Fox and Keizer to put this out? As a news release, Fox has signed and computer as well.
Absolutely, good. Thank you. Moving on, policy 361, which we were just referring to, educational material selection. Dr. Lill.
Good evening. Bringing forward tonight, policy 361, educational and library material selection for approval. The board last saw this during the December 13th, 2021 meeting. There were no additional recommended changes coming out of that discussion. But to summarize, the lion's share of the changes on this particular policy relates to library media material selection, which begins on page two of the policy document. Specifically, the new policy as presented tonight for action addresses language in library media materials that may include sexually explicit language, profanity, and also outlines the individual protections that parents have over the materials that their children would be able to access.
Does anyone have any questions for Dr. Lill? If not, is there a motion to approve the policy as presented?
So.
Is there a second?
Second.
It was a motion by Mr. Kelsar, and seconded by Mrs. Deuce. Is there any questions, comments, additions? Just as an update, we will be discussing the procedure on how if a parent has questions or concerns, how to bring those with regards to this at the upcoming curriculum.
It may not be, it's not slated for this week. The team is currently working on a draft of those procedures to operationalize the policy anticipating the approval this evening.
Perfect, great, thank you. Okay, if there are no other questions or comments, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you, so yes.
Thank you.
Okay, policy 342, special education programs. This is one.
Okay, so this one, we're coming up for the request to inform the changes. The change that we made, one was entitled, "To Make This Broader, Not to Speak About Special Ed." Has to be about all students with disabilities. We went through this policy and made changes to make it more in line with the federal guidelines and the federal process, rather than having a separate district process, but making sure that as a district are following what the federal guidelines are making to do. We made some changes to make sure it's updated to the areas of disability. And then we also added section 504 on here. It is our obligation as district to follow the federal guidelines under the Office of Civil Rights. And I felt that it was important that we have a policy that aligns with that. And finally, we added the non-discrimination statement to the bottom of the slide.
Does anyone have any questions, please, this time? If not, is there a motion to approve policy 342 as presented? Is there a second?
I'll second.
It was moved by Mr. Kelsar, and seconded by Mrs. Solley, to approve policy 342 programs for students with disabilities as presented. Are there any additional questions or comments? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That one's okay. And a final instruction for you, that one also, 342.2.
And this policy, there were minimal changes to the policy. Most of the changes that we had made were to the procedure to align the current practice. This policy was brought to review, and it has not been reviewed since 2013. So this was brought to the board to review and to review the procedure to make sure it lines with practice in minimal ways.
Is there a motion to approve policy 342.2, home guidance instruction as presented?
So.
Second? It was moved by Mrs. Shane and seconded by Mrs. Deuce. Are there any additional questions or comments? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Great.
Thank you very much, that is passed. Okay, you. And just as a reminder to our viewing audience, Mr. Kelsar and the policy committee are obviously trying to make sure all of our policies have been brought forth as not been reviewed the last five years. So we're getting there, and we have probably just a few left.
No, not yet.
That's good. So, okay. Bouchers payable.
Yes, I moved to approve vouchers payable through January 6th, 2022, in amount of $609,703 and 32 cents.
Is there a second?
Oh.
Okay. It was moved by Mrs. Grant, seconded by Mrs. Solley, to approve vouchers payable in amount of $609,703 and 32 cents from December 10th, 2021, through January 6th, 2022. Are there any questions or anything you'd like to share?
I just wanted to know, I mean, it looks like obviously winter sports are in full effect. We had lots of ref, paying lots of referees for basketball, volleyball, swimming, gymnastics, wrestling, and insurance, and other sports as well. Other things, structure fees for community education and rec agency, football concession, the electrical upgrade for $40,000. So that was a big expense, and I'm sure we're all happy that they did. They purchased tubas for the North Middle School, and they purchased a lumber for the Woods class. So, really, what I have there. Anything else?
Thank you. Appreciate you looking at that. Does anyone else have any questions for Mrs. Grant? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So. Okay. The set agenda items, which includes the minutes. So is there a motion to approve board education meeting minutes from December 13th, 2021?
So.
Is there a second?
Second.
It was moved by Mr. Kelsar, and seconded by Mrs. Deuce, to approve the minutes from December 13th, 2021. Were there any corrections, comments, suggestions? Okay, if not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? If then asked, thank you. Now it's time, as we come to the end of the meeting, for future board agenda items. Kim, if you want to make one suggestion?
Yeah, the finance committee would like the whole board to discuss the North Middle School start time and possible changes of us.
Okay, thank you. We can probably not put that on the next meeting because we have a personality issue that we need to work on after that meeting, but we can do that afterwards for the next meeting.
But it does need a discussion item as part of the agenda meeting.
That's perfect.
Yeah, that's fine. It doesn't need to be a full session. We just, as a committee, we're kind of like, well, let's, you know, we kind of think we know what our non-voting goals are, or sort of the no-go items, but we just wanted the whole board to have input on it.
Do you not see from work session?
No, no. Just a discussion item. I mean, it probably took us, what, like 10 minutes to discuss? Probably not even as a whole board, but that way you can see all the information that the committee reviewed and just reveal some of the decision points that would be discussed.
Thank you. Kim can then make sure to put that on as a discussion item in the board vote. Keith?
Okay, cool, thank you.
All right, and we do have two other items on there. One is a board workshop on continuous improvement, and one is on bullying and harassment. So maybe we can put one on maybe the first meeting, February 1st, first meeting in March. I don't want to just load this up, maybe it's a whole session, but. I don't want to just load this up, maybe maybe as a work session, but to get that done. With that said, does anybody else have anything they want to include as a discussion item? Okay. With that said, is there a motion to adjourn the meeting and convene a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes, 19.851D, Strategy for Crime Detection and Prevention in Regardless of Schools During the Safety?
So.
Second.
It was moved by Mrs. Deuce, and seconded by Mrs. Gillett. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?